I'd like to call the September 5th work session to order. Note that Councilor Rebecca Savinjord is out today on a family matter and that Councilors Massey and Council President Nicodemus are participating from home via Zoom due to being under the weather. So it's just kind of an odd setup here, just Councilor Koshrabadi and I in the room. And I would also just remind everybody, we're operating here under sort of the B-team when it comes to technology, and so please do speak into your microphone. I had to, I participated in a budget meeting recently from home and it was difficult to hear, actually, the people there at the table where Peter is were all audible. It was the people up here on the dais who were, who I had trouble hearing. So I just want to remind everybody to speak into the microphone maybe more deliberately than we normally do. And with that, I will introduce Public Works Director Peter Passarelli to talk about seismic updates and really some other non-seismic updates, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Beatty and council members. I'm Peter Passarelli, the Public Works Director, and I am here this afternoon to talk about our public safety building seismic retrofits that we're doing and an update on some improvements at the Johnson Creek campus as part of the overall city move. So, as you recall, the city went out last February of '22, submitted a grant application to the state to get some funding to do some seismic retrofitting of our public safety building. That building was constructed just prior, just around the time new seismic code was coming in place in the mid-'90s, and didn't get sort of a full retrofit. So we went and put together an application and last June of, I think June of '22, we got word from the state that we were going to get a little over $1.2 million to do some retrofits in that building to bring it up to code. We engaged with Peterson Structural Engineers to help us with the application to begin with, but also to do the design, and we've progressed with the design. And we're at the point now where we expect to solicit bids here at the latter part of this month. The current project estimate for the construction phase based off of the 90% plans, and we were able to dig in a little bit more during the design and really fully identify what needed to be done once we got the design in place, is around $625,000, plus or minus. So we're expecting that we're going to be within that budget. We do have a share as well that's part of the full project. So the full project also includes about another $200,000 or so thousand dollars of city money that will pay for, that pays for the construction, the design, and the construction services phase where we're going to have Peterson Structural Engineer, PSC, help us sort of manage and manage that project and do the inspections and those sorts of things to make sure the contractors are doing the things that they're supposed to do. Yeah, so like I said, we're hoping to go out for bid here at the end of this month. Plans were, plans are pretty much done 100%. We're finalizing some of the final front-end documents. Those are sort of the Milwaukee-specific contractual documents that we have to put in place with the technical specifications before we can go out, go out for bid. And then I expect that we'll be awarding a contract in December or early Jan, sometime in January with construction to be completed by September of '24. So what kind of work are we doing there? There's a pretty broad variety of work. A lot of it is structural focused, where we're making some retrofits to the concrete masonry walls, making sure that walls are being connected appropriately, both to the roof, to the second floor, and to the foundation. And we're going to be using a fiber-reinforced polymer system that's typically used in sort of these types of retrofit systems to do that. We're going to be doing some, also some non-structural retrofitting in the building for, you know, existing equipment and furnishings and decorative features, things that might fall over in an earthquake, so we're going to get those things, you know, tied down to the floor or to the wall. Also doing the same thing with some of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing and gas piping that might be susceptible to any shaking. In the fire station bay, there's some work related to the transformers and radiant heat systems in there. We want to provide some bracing there. The acoustical tile ceilings, we've got to do some work there to retrofit those. And then the doors in the bay, we're going to put in some new, six new doors in that, in the fire bay to make sure that they're able to be open, to be closed, and don't collapse. And then there's a screening wall around the building, and we're going to do some retrofitting there next to the generator so that wall wouldn't fall on a generator if we had an issue, ideally. So that's sort of the type of work that we're going to be doing there. So I wanted to talk a little bit about, also a little bit about our Johnson Creek Campus Building. So as you know, city is getting ready to move into the new City Hall, and the community development team, the planning, building, engineering staff that are over there are going to be leaving that front building, and our Public Works Department is going to be reusing that building. And right now, we've got plans to move 10 of our staff up there. That's generally our administrative team, fleet and facilities manager, natural resources team are going to be utilizing that space. And by doing that, we are going to open up some of the space in the operations building, Public Works Operations Building in the back part of that campus for use by our utility leads, so that they will now have dedicated offices. Some of them did in the past. They don't, they don't, everyone will now have a space where they can do some of their work planning that they do and have a space to do those sorts of things. So like I said, we'll be moving up there as the city transitions into the new City Hall. So just the move schedule, I think right now the CD and engineering and building are planning on moving September 13th and 14th. We're going to do an early move of some of Public Works administrative staff on the 15th, so that way, following Monday, the 18th, we'll have that building staff, we'll have somebody there available if, you know, residents or customers come in and they have questions, we'll be able there to help them out. That poses some challenges, of course, because we're going to also be doing some work in those buildings. So we're going to, will be some times where, maybe a couple days, several days, that we're actually going to have to shut down because we're going to be doing carpet replacements and painting, wall painting, ceiling tile replacements. So there'll be some days where we're going to have to shut down and do some work remotely, and we'll notify the public of that. But those, that general work, I think, is going to happen October to mid-November. Some of it might start in early September. And then, once all that's done, the remaining Public Works admin team will move up into that building. So right now, the plan on next week is I'm going to be moving up there along with my administrative assistant Sasha. Courtney, our urban forester, is already up there. She'll be staying in place. Our climate and natural resource manager Natalie is going to be moving up there as well. And then our new asset management coordinator is going to be starting next week, actually. She'll have a space up there. And then, like I said, the remaining parts of the team, our facilities manager, some of our other natural resource staff will move up there. Our other admin specialist will move up there as well, probably mid-November. And then we're also going to do some upgrades in our Public Works Operations Building, some carpet replacement, some painting in there as well to freshen up that space. And then we hope to have an open house in December or January. So what we've budgeted for all this work is about $160,000. The front building, I mentioned a little bit about this, we're doing some carpet work, some painting, replacing the ceiling tile. We're updating and removing some of the cabinetry and also updating some of it. In the building area, there's a long row of cabinets that aren't necessary there anymore. We're going to be removing those. And then we're going to be doing some new cubicle configuration using some of the furniture that we acquired through the Aventis property sale of the new City Hall. We'll be using some of that, some updating some of that furniture there. And then in November to December, we'll be doing, replacing carpets in the old Public Works building, painting the interior, and doing some hallway and cabinet modification there as well. So that's sort of the work, the schedule of work, of what we're going to be doing there. So I gave you a brief update on our seismic retrofits and schedule, and then our JCP project.
All right, questions? Normally, I go last, but I think since, I think we'll go with the people in the room first and let the people online come in later with their questions if they have them. So I'm going to look to Councilor Koshrabadi to see if he has any questions.
So this grant is covering the total cost of all these, there's no like outside?
Well, we've got about $200,000 of a shared cost.
Okay.
So the 1.2 plus 200,000.
And that's the PSB, that's not the Public Works.
And we believe, based off of the estimates, the optimistic estimates are that we'll be well within that, the total budget cost, so.
Excellent, okay, thank you, thank you.
So I was, I've read the staff report with interest in this FRP, yeah, I can't find it, fiber reinforced polymers. I guess I thought, you know, I don't know anything about how you seismically retrofit a building, but I guess I figured it meant like, you know, metal drilled into the ground and bolted walls and things like that. So does this actually go in, you said it's masonry, does it go into the masonry? It's a coating that you paint over the masonry?
It's a coating that's, will be on the masonry.
Okay.
And, you know, into the, through the, through the first, second, into the roof floor, it'll be, will be coating, and it's not the entire structure, it's just at certain locations.
Oh, really? Okay.
And.
Interior?
Interior. It's not on the exterior.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is a less intrusive form of retrofitting, you know, like on our, on our water tower, when we did, I think we did a retrofit of that tower, I think back in 2016. That was more, you know, steel and, and like you said, bolts, and on our Stanley reservoir project that we have upcoming, there are, there are those types of retrofits as well. That'll be sort of steel and adding more, in some cases, adding more structure there.
But this meets the state codes on.
It does, yeah.
Okay, great, great. So on the Public Works, I was curious as to how many people are currently in that front building?
How many staff are currently up in that front building? I think on any given day, it's like 12 or less.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think because, because of some of the.
Oh, because people work from home, but I mean, how many workstations, I guess, are in that building? How many work areas are in that building, like 25?
Yeah.
I think that was what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Roughly double what's in this building. I mean, same as what's in this building.
But there are, there are, there are generally open workstations that have never been filled in that space.
For sure, so many people can work from home.
Or we just had more, there was more space there. I think moving, when the engineering team, CIP team moved over here, that opened up, certainly opened up some space.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, well, I have a comment I want to, but I want to open the floor to, to Councilor Massey and Council President Nicodemus if they have any questions. Let's start with the Council President.
No, I don't.
Okay, and Councilor Massey?
Yes, thank you. Peter, I got a little bit lost between the upgrade to the Johnson Creek Building and the seismic upgrade, so is all of the grant money allocated in your plan?
All of the grant money that we got from the seismic retrofit grant program from the state is going to the public safety building?
Yeah, is it all, is it all allocated in the plan? That's my question.
Yes, yes, yeah, yes.
And so, does the state have its own seismic standard, or are you going with the, or do we go with the ASNE standard?
We went with the state's seismic code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it? All right. I mean, I think the 160, $160,000 for refreshing the two buildings is, you know, that seems like a reasonable amount to me, and they, heaven knows, they need a little refreshing. And they've both been pretty, I'm surprised to hear you say there's only 12 people in there because back, it's been a while since I paid a visit to planners, I mean, it was certainly pre-COVID, but I remember it being, you know, planners with tight cubicles, and so I get that they've been crowded in that building, but it almost feels to me like 10 people isn't very many for that building. And I do know we talked, at the time we bought the new building, about a potential, potential use of some part of that building for maybe an east side library satellite where we had a place where people could pick up books and a place where they could use computers. I can also think of other uses, like a place for our, what are they called, behavioral health specialist and that staff to meet people or have an information desk that people can get information. So I guess I'm a little disappointed that we haven't had those conversations before sort of being presented that it's, you know, that we're not going to make any public use out of that building. Yeah, I guess that's my comment. I feel like there was some opportunity there to maybe provide some services, still give some relief to Public Works and use some of the building for Public Works, but also to give some, provide some services to the east side of town, especially as we think about our growth. about our growth, you know, our growth management area further east. I mean, having some amount of city services on the east side of town is appealing to me, I guess I would say. So, yeah, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have that conversation. But anyway, I think it's, you know, the buildings definitely need a refresh, so I'm glad to see that that's happening. And I guess, if nobody else has any other questions, we can let you go and move on to the Arts Committee.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your point on that.
So the Arts Committee, we have Jordan Imlaw, and is he being joined by Samantha Schindler? Okay, Jordan Imlaw's our Communications Program Manager and the liaison to the Arts Committee from the staff, and Samantha Schindler is the Arts Committee Chair. And they're gonna talk about their work plan for the next year.
I'll start it for you.
Sure.
Well, an annual update, so what they've done this year and their work plan for the next year. And as you might expect of the Arts Committee, they have some of the better-looking slides that grace our screen.
I told Jordan he has to do all my power.
You're too kind. I guess, I guess you scroll down.
Okay.
Hello, City Council. Thanks for having us today. We're just gonna do a quick rundown of, yeah, just some of the things we've been working on, the goals, some of the successes, some of the other projects we're hoping to do, and then, things we're hoping to work on in the future. So we'll just start off with the goals. There we go. So these goals are similar to ones that the Arts Committee has set in the past. We've had a process where we've gone through, and these are, kind of remain our overarching goals, and then we have subcategory goals under each one. So, like, the first one was cultivate opportunities to, for the community to engage and create art. This year, this committee is really focused on creating a contact list and being able to connect with artists, and then also find opportunities to engage with people who are interested in volunteering. We've noticed, especially this past year, that there's been an uptick in community members who'd like to get involved with the committee, and not necessarily in, like, an official capacity, but just help out either with art shows or come to other events, or, you know, just kind of lend their support however they feel like they can. And so, this contact database has been a good addition, and we can remind people of different things and just kind of have a good network of contacts.
And is that something?
Oh.
I'm supposed to save my questions at the end. I'll do that.
You can ask it now if you want. I don't mind.
No, I'm gonna, that was something the council agreed to, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and restrain myself.
Sorry for encouraging you to do something you're not supposed to. And then, establishing Milwaukee's identity as the Regional Center for Arts and Culture, pretty much self-explanatory, but just expanding some of the different opportunities that the Arts Committee gets involved with, and continuing to host, like, art-themed and art-focused events and activities. And then, this last, this third goal is probably one that I think they've worked the most on this past year, establish diverse funding streams. And this is where I've seen the committee do just a great job of applying for grants in regards to getting a sculpture and an event that we'll talk about in a little bit. Continuing to host the art shows again at City Hall during First Friday, which the Arts Committee gets a percentage of some of the sales that are done those days, or when they're just up throughout the month. And then, also with, sorry, what was I gonna say? What was the other one?
Porch Fest.
Porch Fest, yeah. Sponsorships, yeah. That's great. And the committee's done a really good job of getting, kind of like a lower-scaled sponsorship, but getting many lower-scaled sponsorships. So it's a very, like, approachable kind of sponsorship that smaller businesses, especially the ones in downtown, have access to, and it isn't burdensome, you know, to kind of participate, but then they also get a lot of publicity, and I think it's been a really great partnership. Is there anything you wanted to add to the goals, Samantha?
Nope, that's, those are the goals.
So, just kind of give you a brief rundown of some of the things we've been doing this past year. We'll start off with the umbrella parade kits. Back in, at the end of November of 2022, the Arts Committee put together a little over 50 kits during the day at the beer store, right? And then, went to the lighting library and passed them out in the lobby. And that's committee member Josh Freeman and his kids there handing them out, and they all went really quickly.
Yeah, we were there like maybe an hour, but they were all gone.
Wow.
So they included things like, you know, battery-operated lights that you could hang inside of an umbrella, like, you know, some other decoration stickers, things like fringe tassels.
Little craft things.
Yeah. And just trying to encourage more community members to be able to get involved and make that type of event approachable, because one of the things we occasionally hear is that, like, how do you decorate an umbrella? And we have a two-time winner here with Samantha, who has a lot of insight and expertise. So I've really felt like we saw those things in action, too, during the event, that, like, we could see community members, oh, like, there's those lights that the committee bought, or those, that's kind of like the, you know, the other holiday decorations they attached, but those are from the packet, so. But that was fun. And maybe do it this year, too? We don't know yet.
Yeah. We talked about doing, you know, maybe like, an event where you came and worked on your umbrella, and that's just kind of like a heavy lift for people to do during the holiday. And so we thought, well, let's just make the kits available. So we'll probably do something like this again, either the kits or maybe a little event. I don't know. It's hard to tell what's gonna be, be able to get volunteers to show up at and people will want to come to.
Right.
Because the thing, like, you know, if you decorate an umbrella, and you have to be able to, like, collapse it quickly to take it home, anyway. Logistics of umbrella decorating. You really have to think this through.
Plus, we kind of tend to do it around Thanksgiving and people are out of town, and yeah, it's days off, things like that. So Porch Fest, another great year of Porch Fest, continue to get more and more performances and great high-quality acts, like, all around the city. I think this is one of the few events that touches, like, literally every neighborhood in the entire community. And also, just a really easy way to kind of connect with performing arts and try out things, like, I know even some of, like, the professional comedians come and, like, they test out their material before they go perform it at, like, the Helium Club, or, you know, places like that. Like, it's pretty cool that people like that are seeing Porch Fest as that type of an opportunity. And yeah, like we said before, a lot of good sponsorships, again, and a lot of good community partnerships, like, with people helping us make T-shirts. But this year, we did hats, actually, trucker hats. A lot of those went to the bands that performed, and yeah. Do you want to talk more about Porch Fest? You know way more than I do about it.
Porch Fest went really great. We did have several local business sponsors that covered all the expenses for Porch Fest. The biggest expense is, we try to provide something for all the acts that perform, so it's been T-shirts. This year, we did hats. We ordered 125 hats and gave them all away to performers, so that gives you a sense of how many people are participating. We had hoped to, like, have, if we had extra, we would sell them, but we ended up not having any extra. So I guess that's a good problem.
Yeah. Good problem to have.
And I think we'll just kind of keep it at the level that it's at. I've even had other communities reach out to us, because they like Porch Fest, and so there was a group in Oregon City that did a little mini Porch Fest. And I've had some people from Portland reach out, and were like, we wanna do Porch Fest. I'm like, you can do Porch Fest. Go right ahead. Probably, I think that would be a little bit outside the scope of what we would include in our map, you know, maybe a little cell would, but that, you know, beyond that, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work to distribute the signs and keep track of all the bands, and there's a website, and, but it seems pretty successful, and I've heard nothing but positive things.
I think the map's a really good success story, too. I mean, it's updated a lot, and a lot of people rely on it and kind of use it as a little walking tour guide around different neighborhoods. That's been, it's been really helpful. The committee participated in the Juneteenth and Pride celebrations in June, they, for, sorry, for the Juneteenth, we had a booth and did some arts and crafts coloring projects there. And then, for Pride, we were part of the planning. Mark McCrery on the committee was part of the planning committee and also volunteered during the event. A few other community members volunteered during the event, too, just for event logistics. Anything else you want to say about that?
I missed most of those. But I heard they were great.
Yeah. And, yeah, it was an exciting time for First Friday and City Hall art receptions. It was interesting, because this was a kind of a fun, organic way that it kind of came together, that we had a committee member who said, yeah, like, I'll help host, and then she did it herself with some of her art. And just from that, and like promoting that, we got all the other artists for their other months, and then some, even more artists that wanted to show their work at City Hall. Like, we could have gone for several more months showing different artists. And then, each night, artists sold prints and original pieces, and then, and every month that we had them up at City Hall, they had sales, and so I think it was really successful. And then, also got to meet some other artists from the community and make some other good contacts with that. And feel like we were a good partner with First Friday and kind of activated this part of downtown. And then, North Clackamas School District used our driveway, too, so we kind of got to partner and kind of play off of each other, too. And then, I think they even had, like, their information booth right in front of City Hall, so that was also nice to have kind of a draw like that. Anything else you want to add?
I really don't know what the plan is going forward in the new City Hall, if this is something that would want to be continued or not, but we'd be game to do it. And then, and the other thing that could potentially be a possibility is that the new owners of this space, I think, are looking for ways to still include art and maybe have some curated stuff, and very tentative discussions that the Arts Committee might be able to help with that as well, so.
And so here's some of our current projects. So we're under contract with artist Alex Chu, who's going to do a mural in the community center. That's him in the top right corner. That's not the mural that he's doing or anything. That's actually in Beaverton. He did that with Twelton Hills Parks and Recreation District. But interestingly enough, the community center is looking for something very similar. They want to kind of shed the idea that it's just a senior center and play up to the new name of Community Center and people of all ages, so they're looking to kind of really activate that space and the people who might be driving by, going to, like, the parks there and the baseball fields. And they really liked Alex's work and kind of how he, he has a, he's a really adaptive style that he can kind of hone for each different project, and so they, I think, but they do like this style that he has up here as an example. We met the other day at the spot, and so he got some, like, measurements, and it's kind of coming together, and he's gonna propose some different concepts in the next couple weeks.
And this, I'm breaking my own rule, but is this, is this where it's going, on the front here?
No, I didn't have a great picture of the side. It's the side of the building that's on the road, kind of like where the exercise equipment is. Yeah, that wall. And right now, they're sort of figuring out some logistics on how to get the mural on, because the, you can kind of tell from the photo, but there's those, like, sort of thin slats of wood that would break up the mural quite a bit. He's thinking of maybe doing it on, like, aluminum sheets, kind of similar to, like, the Chapel Theater mural, where it's on panels. Like, he would come in and basically install the panels on, and then potentially be able to paint it at home or in his own studio, because we're getting into the rainy months, so it wouldn't prohibit him from working on it if we did it that way. And if he can do it that way, he is estimating he'll be done in the beginning of January. And right now, we have our call for sculptors out. Those are two of the sculptures that are leaving, so sadly, a lot of people will be sad about the fish going. Everyone likes that. But he's applied several times to the garden, so hopefully he has another large animal that spins around in the wind for us to have up there. We don't know exactly, like, we know we're gonna retain ownership of that piece of property. We don't know exactly, like, how, like, going forward, that might play, and we might be able to have a good partnership with the tenants here in this building. I definitely think it'll bring more attention to the sculpture garden, just, especially because there's a proposed, like, outdoor space there to eat and things like that right next to it. So I can see it being more prominent and possibly getting, you know, more opportunities or more, like, interest in it from outside artists from the community and Portland area. And this year, we're just looking for two, because of the next thing we'll talk about, but we have a contract for a Bing cherry sculpture for the front. And if Sam wants to talk about that, or I can, either one. This is the rendering from Tyler Fuqua.
Yeah. So Tyler is gonna make us a giant cherry, and it will go in the very front pedestal of the sculpture garden, and that one will just stay there, so that will be, the city will own that, I think. It will not move, I think. Where it will be in that spot all the time. And I can't really tell from this, but he, his concept is, like, it's steel, and it's gonna be, like, powder-coated, like, I guess, a car. So it'll be bright red with a stem, and it's made out of, like, steel spirals that are all kind of connected together. So it won't be completely solid, and the idea is that there will also be some lights in the inside of it, so that it will be able to be lit up and glow, like a glowing heart of this cherry. The cherry sculpture is completely funded by grants, and the Arts Committee got a variety of grants to fund a three-phase project to celebrate a Bing and the Bing Cherry. And that is step one, which is this sculpture, which will go in the sculpture garden. Step two, which is an informational plaque, what do we call this?
Interpretive exhibit.
Interpretive exhibit plaque, that will tell the story of a Bing, the cultivation of the Bing Cherry, which happened here in Milwaukee, as I'm sure we all know intimately about this story. And also talk about the Chinese exclusion laws of that time in Oregon, and how, you know, a Bing left. He went home to China. He never came back. And the, we worked with the Milwaukee Historical Society to get a grant specifically for the signage. So all total, we got almost $15,000 in grants.
Wow.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the third phase is a New Year's Eve event to raise and lower a giant cherry to, quote, "Bing in the New Year."
Yes.
It's the best pun ever. And so of all, we got grants from Reeser Foundation.
Otzen.
Otzen, Clackamas Art Alliance.
Kinsman.
Kinsman Foundation, and like, an Oregon State Museum grant. Of all these grants, specifically $3,800 that the museum got is for the signage. The rest of it is to be used for the sculpture and the event, however we want to do it, although there are, you know, timeframe stuff on these grants, so we do have to, we do have to have this cherry event this year. So we are in that phase, and that is the big Arts Committee project, I guess, at the moment.
That's an excellent, you want me to go to that one?
Yeah, sure. Let's go to the next slide. Yeah, so we're currently working through event logistics, I guess, and I think we're in a good place with this. So there were some concerns about, the initial concept was to raise and lower the giant cherry sculpture. Like, it stays onto the platform, and all those are just bolted on, so they can be moved and unbolted. And so the idea was to rent a crane, like, literally a crane with a crane guy, crane licensed guy, to raise and lower this thing. There was some concern about that. So I think that hopefully we have come up with an alternative that would be a giant, like, PVC sphere, geodesic dome sphere. There's a company that makes these things. And kind of similar to this picture in the bottom from some other town, cities do this all over. You know, it's an American tradition to bring in the Gregarian calendar New Year by lowering some giant thing to account down. People keep asking me why I want to do it on December 31st, and I'm like, that's the only time that makes sense. Other than that, this is ridiculous. But it totally makes sense if you do it on New Year's Eve.
The other one's a nugget, right? Like a gold nugget?
Yeah, that, at the top, which I just love, because it's kind of like an artistic conceptual thing, that it's in Marion, North Carolina, and they drop a gold nugget. Why? I don't know. I'm sure it has something to do with their town history. None of these things are as cool as the Bing Cherry, I don't think. So we're still looking at using a crane, and we're gonna get this giant PVC cherry that we will construct as the Arts Committee. It'll weigh about 55 pounds. We'll wrap it in lights. We're gonna have the event, the plan is to have it in the parking lot where the farmer's market is. And so like, the back part of that, where, there's two parking lots, right? So the parking lot that's near 99, we're thinking that can be where the crane is, and we'll, obviously, no one will be right below the cherry. God forbid, something would happen, whatever. So that's gonna be spaced off. There will, it will be a slow, controlled descent, not a drop of a cherry. No one will be underneath the cherry. And in the other parking lot, the beer store is interested in running a beer garden. We've got a local pizza bus that is interested in having pizza there.
Harthensoul, they've been at others.
Yeah, Harthensoul is interested in having pizza there, and then I heard that the Thespians at Milwaukee High will be running, like, a hot cocoa or something booth. And we'll have some live music, and ideally, if we had enough, if we have enough money, we might need to do some more fundraising. I'd love to have lion dancers there as we lower the cherry. It's kind of like a big celebration countdown thing. We're still kind of in logistics of figuring out how much we have. We're still kind of in logistics of figuring out how much we have, if we need to get community sponsors for more, if we can, you know, just, you know, we have to do like an event permanent stuff, so we're kind of in that phase of it. But, I think it would be such a really fun community event. I think it's so unique. I think this could be a real like placemaking event for Milwaukee and something that we could be known for. It's a, it's a unique part of our past. It is giving honor to a, you know, historic Milwaukiean that hasn't had the kind of recognition that a lot of these other people, you know, Llewellyn's got a neighborhood, Hector Campbell's got a neighborhood, you know. We, we should celebrate Ah Bing and his contributions. And there are not a lot of things to do that are family-friendly on New Year's Eve. There's actually like, I can't think of anything to do. The other thing I should mention is that we're planning to lower this cherry on a kid-friendly East Coast drop time of 9:00 PM. So, you know, if it ends up being like a huge thing and we think down the line, if we do this again and people really like it and maybe we grow it to an actual midnight, but I think that 9:00 PM is more realistic and I think we would, you know, the idea is that families would go to this and it's not going to be like a rowdy all-nighter, I don't think. So, we're hoping that at 9:00 PM, we can get like the local businesses in downtown to, you know, participate and be open and that kind of thing.
The Bing Cherry sculpture that's being commissioned could potentially be the thing that's lowered. However, due to its weight and other factors, it's likely won't be, but it has the potential. It's built to be lifted and lowered, but.
Yeah.
It's also 500 pounds, so.
I think he said like 350.
350.
But, we're in the hundreds of pounds. And so, the idea, again, because these grants have to be, you know, if we're going to use them, we need to do it for this year. So, the idea is that we have this other temporary sculpture that can be pulled out and disassembled. And heck, you know, maybe we'll use a giant cherry for some other thing. I mean, we could do more cherry stuff in, in June and other, other months. You know, we put it on a float, whatever. There's tons of things you can do with a giant sphere covered in lights. You know, heck, it could be pumpkin for Halloween. Ooh, okay, anyway, so.
Endless opportunities.
You know, you do those LED lights, you can change the colors. What was I going to say? Oh, yeah, so, long-term, I guess this project has brought up some other things with the Arts Committee because this is, is this going to be the first like art sculpture that the, that the city owns?
Yes, technically, it would be. I mean, there was one that was a very low dollar amount a long time ago, Cherish. It was like a chair with, had like red PVC tubes on it, if you remember that. But, it, it was in the Sculpture Garden for a while until everyone sat on it and broke it. But, yes, this would probably be the first official, like, yeah, well-built or well-built to sustain, yeah, people getting on it kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think long-term, after, after this New Year event, I think we could have conversations with like, do, does the city want to own this? There's long been talk about like, do we want to have a foundation for the arts? Kind of like how the Parks Foundation got formed and who would be in charge of the long-term like maintenance if these things need care? It's going to be a steel sculpture, so I don't anticipate like a ton of maintenance anytime soon. But, you know, long-term, these are things that we should be thinking about. And then, the other thing that's happened is, and I think maybe we're still in the process of redefining that, the mural fund? Is that still.
Yeah.
Working out? But, the idea is that we can, we can expand the definition of the mural fund and not just use that money for like literal murals, but that we can also use them for public art, which, you know, be essentially sculpture art in public places. Again, this cherry completely funded by grants, so not part of that. But, down the line, could we have like some geese statues in some of the parks or places where geese attack? Or could we, you know, we've talked about having like a sign that spells out. Oh, is it on there? Oh, you have a slide for everything.
Yeah.
Anyway, so like, long-term, are there, would there be, and the thing about sculpture art is that it's way more expensive than murals, usually. We're getting a great deal on this cherry. So, would there be interest in, in creating a nonprofit or teaming up with a nonprofit so that we could go after more money? Although, we've been really successful getting grants just as part of the city, so, I don't know. Those are, I'm rambling at this point, but these are, these are very exciting things for the future as we look at expanding what the Arts Committee can do for public art in Milwaukee.
So.
Oh, yeah, I skipped right to your thing.
So, yeah, yeah, with the expanded definition of the, the Arts Fund, yeah, still looking into that. I think there's some other internal support too for a sculpture like that, that, you know, would be like a, like a placemaking kind of entry waypoint kind of a sculpture that would help identify the city better and, and create a fun photographable spot. And then, we're also planning for next round of Porch Fest. And then, in the more immediate future, we'll have a scarecrow contest again, I guess, one of the last ones at this building on a slightly limited scale, a little bit more limited than other years. But, Arts Committee is still planning to judge that and then also participate in the judging for the Umbrella Parade contest. And, yeah, possibly doing kits.
Yeah.
And still continuing to plan for a Bing Cherry event.
I mean, this is a lot for the, I mean, years ago, I don't know that the Arts Committee did these many, you know, public-facing events and organizing events. And if, you know, when we do this cherry thing, I think that'll be like the biggest singular event, although Porch Fest is pretty big. So, yeah, it's very exciting. And I just think, I think the Milwaukee with the missing I is hilarious because everybody spells it wrong and it's interactive and it's place, it just checks all the boxes for me about like what.
And I think it lends itself to Milwaukee. I belong here. It's got a tagline that writes itself.
Put something on the, on the base to encourage people to stand there. But, then it would be you belong here. But, we'll, we'll figure it out.
I mean, that's about it for the presentation, but we're welcome to, or happy to answer questions.
All right. Counselor Costner-Buddy?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I was actually going to ask about the cherry. That was what I was hoping for, so thank you for bringing that up. Just real quick, Mayor, didn't, I thought we already, didn't we clarify that the mural fund can be used for sculpt, we already?
You did, yeah.
You did, I think, I guess, Mike, I didn't know if it had like, the paperwork had happened yet.
No, it's, it's in, it's being created now. And then, yeah, we'll have that and we'll, we'll make sure it's.
Is that an actual, does that have to be an ordinance change or that was just a policy? That was just a budget policy?
That, I think, is a question, Justin, that we just weren't entirely clear on. We had the discussion with council about clarifying the intent of that. Is there any documentation officially that needs to happen?
I don't recall.
Okay. Okay.
But, whatever, whatever needs to be done, we'll, we'll make sure it gets done. Because I, I believe we did get council direction on how to work that. I just, as I sit here today, I can't recall.
Yeah, and that packet, I think, you know, just said it was sort of how it was framed for the budget process. I don't think there was an actual ordinance, but anyway.
I had just a few brief conversations with Tim Soliers about it and he did want something maybe added to the code to kind of like define what it is, just so we're not putting up something that could be in potentially violation of a different code ordinance.
Okay.
Just, yeah, to kind of, and also to solidify it for us internally so we don't forget, which sometimes happens with these things, so.
And my, my other question is, remind me where, where those two sculptures are going? Those two that are leaving?
Oh.
Oh, they're in the Sculpture Garden, right?
Yeah, but they're, you said they're going to leave the Sculpture Garden?
Yeah, they rotate out. All the sculptures are here for two years. And so.
Oh, okay.
Usually, three rotate out as three other rotate in. And then, they, they're like off every year, so like.
I feel like the fish has been here since I've been living here.
It has been here, yeah. It's, it's been here, basically, I think, right at two years, like right now. And that, that's about the life of, you know, how long they're here, so.
I thought it was here longer than that.
Yeah, so the city doesn't actually own any of those. They're just on like loan essentially from the artist. The artist retains ownership and we give them $1,000?
Yep, they get a $1,000 honorarium.
Yeah, for like showing their work, basically.
Interesting.
Yeah, but they're all for sale too, so, and the Arts Committee could potentially get like a commission from having them sold from.
You want to drop 10 grand or whatever on that fish? 16.
I.
Jeez.
I reached out to buy what was there before the fish, actually, and, but I couldn't, I couldn't quite pay the price.
Oh, was that Ben Guy's sculpture?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
It's a little above my pay grade as well.
We will be looking at grants to supplement some of the funding that we got into that public art fund. I, I think that there might be some opportunities there if we have a unique concept, for sure.
And Tyler Fuqua actually has a sculpture in the garden right now. It's the Sphere Tree that's kind of closer to the staff parking lot. It has all the really polished orbs like all around it.
Right, okay. That was my only question. I just also wanted to thank you for the work you guys do. I know it's a, it's a lot of work and a lot of time and the connection that you guys are making, like with the community, the businesses, like, I really appreciate that too because that, that makes them feel a part of it. You know, that, that, you're really, I mean, this is, you guys are doing economic development, so we appreciate the work you do because it does bring a lot of people from all over. And it's, it's much appreciated, so thank you. Keep up the good work. It's awesome.
Thank you.
So, just a couple of comments and then I did have a couple of questions. First off, on Porch Fest, great success. I, I heard a lot of people say, and I saw comments on Facebook and Nextdoor about meeting neighbors they hadn't met before, you know, hanging out with people, you know, front lawns and meeting people they hadn't met before. So, I think it's really been a great thing. You know, it started as a COVID thing and we were all trying to keep our distance that first year, but now it's like, you know, piling everybody out there and it, it was really good this summer. And art receptions in the new City Hall, I really do hope we find a way to continue doing that. I think that new City Hall actually lends itself to it even more than this building because of that, you know, big entrance and then that conference room. And a lot of that is visible from the street. And so, I, I think even, you know, yeah, like a standing exhibit that people who are walking by on the street can see from the street is a cool idea. So, I hope we find a way to keep doing that. I wanted to ask you about the, the thing you started off talking about getting volunteers and you had kind of a registry of volunteers. So, is that just sort of word of mouth, people that approach you? Or is there like actually a place on the website or something where people who want to be those volunteers can sign up?
So far, we've had it at all the events, like a signup sheet. But then, do we have it on? I'm not sure if we have it on.
No, but we could do, do more with that. We're trying to just create like a, like essentially an email list. Or, so that we can, we have a really good roster of local artists and musicians and performers and, and I'd like to get a similar list of everybody who's interested in the arts and volunteering so that we can email these people and maybe do, you know, regular, quarterly or monthly, like, here's what's going on in the arts in Milwaukee. Here's stuff that's happening. Here's ways you can get involved. We'd like to, to build our, our volunteer ranks because you don't have to be on the committee to help out at these different events.
Right.
And we need to help.
Well, if you do decide to put it somewhere where people can sign up electronically, let me know and I'll be happy to share and help spread the word.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think maybe we were just taking a cautious step into it to make sure we're, we're all good with it and that it runs smoothly. But, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea to share it now because I think it's going pretty well.
Yeah, okay. And then, you said something about this being the last scarecrow contest?
Well, at this, at this spot.
Didn't we retain the lawn? Didn't we retain the lawn?
Well, I guess not the one in front, but the side, we could do it on the side, I guess, yeah. I, I think we were just, yeah, mainly just, this is the last one at, at this building in the front.
Yeah.
So, there, there's a potential, either there or I guess on that side.
We also, by losing the fire bay, we lose our, our prime scarecrow staging area, but we, we, we are going to do slightly modified scarecrow contest this year, slightly, slightly reduced just because we're in the middle of a move, but we know it's a beloved, beloved community event.
Yeah, 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 it's been going on a long time, yeah.
We had talked about, and I don't know if it's going to be feasible to put them, put them down Main Street as opposed to being in like one specific spot. Can be does something similar and they have their scarecrows like either on street corners or right below street posts or lamp posts, you know? And I think it would be cool if they kind of line the street, but I don't know the logistics of how that would attach, you know, how that would work in, you know?
Well, I was going to say, we have those bulb out. I mean, along the main part of the sidewalk, it's hard to think there's room, but we do have those bulb outs at corners.
I don't know if you can put scarecrows in the, what are those, watershed?
Yeah, swales.
That sounds better than a ditch.
I was just thinking the same thing. That was the same idea, was just posting them around downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a good, yeah, because I think we were thinking about light posts and other like street sign posts, but then we were like, well, do we have to get permission from like PGE or like, do we have to get permission from Public Works to make sure that's okay?
Yeah, and what's involved to make them secure and blah, blah, blah. Yeah, those, that could get complicated, I do think.
Logistics.
Just want to give Counselor Massey a chance to weigh in with any questions or comments if he has any.
Yes, thank you. What a great presentation. I mean, you could just see the creativity just jumping off the PowerPoint there. And I just want to, you know, say thank you for, for all the joy and beauty that you've brought to our community. I am really excited about your ideas about the Bing celebration. I think that is such a great idea. And I, I've got, I know this will just sound like me piling on, but I, Porch Fest is so great. I, I, I go to a lot of the performances and I, I remember walking to one performance that I wanted to see and as I was walking to that, I passed two others on the way. I mean, literally, you couldn't go a few blocks without, you know, coming across a performance and it was just, it was everywhere. So, it's, it's good and it's pervasive and I, I lived a vagabond life previous to Milwaukee, so I have a lot of friends around the country and actually around the world. And I share all my video clips with them about Porch Fest and they're all so envious of what we have going on. They really like it and I tell them that, you know, you know, we had, you know, 30 performances each Friday night, you know, for a three-week period and they just, they're dumbfounded, so. Great job, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Council President Nicodemus?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to thank you for your commitment to promoting, promoting and supporting arts here and our community. It's really commendable what the Arts Committee has done. You know, I'm sure, I'm, I'm 100% sure that, you know, everything that you've done has had a profound impact on our cultural landscape here in Milwaukee. Also, once again, talking about Porch Fest, I think that was a real selling point for our house sitters that watch our House of Summit. They performed in Porch Fest. And I really want to say thank you for putting that on because there were some good folks. Unfortunately, we weren't able to see it, but it definitely was a selling point for them, so, thank you.
I remember them signing up, yeah.
That's awesome. I did not. That's really cool.
Yeah, Porch Fest has gone great. Sometimes people are like, what are you going to, are we doing anything different? I'm like, I'm not, I don't have any plans to change it. And I frankly, it's, I don't know that we can make it any bigger. Sometimes people are like, let's do it, you know, more weekends. I'm like, I have a job. Already, I'm taking vacation to put this on. So, it's a lot of work. I don't know if it gets too much bigger. It's like a really great size right now. It's like a really great size right now, and I think that it's kind of got that community feel, you know, so, it's perfect.
I mean, I did have somebody come by my yard, like, in mid-August, saying, aren't you having music this Friday? I'm like, no, those were just in July, sorry.
It's not every weekend.
It's not the whole summer long, right? Right, um, okay.
Mayor, can I just say one quick thing? I just wanted to thank Sam and Jordan for the great presentation, and, and really, you know, um, I've only been here three months. My first week, I checked my calendar and I had a meeting called "How to Maintain a Hoisted-Lit Cherry." It remains the best meeting I've ever been invited to, but joking aside, Sam's leadership and passion is really infectious. I love that you make art, you know, a, a tool for engagement, for fostering and celebrating identity and diversity, and, um, I also really appreciate your, your patience as we've, we've navigated a lot of logistics together, and we continue to. But I just couldn't be more grateful for your leadership in our community, and thanks, Jordan, for being such a great staff liaison.
Jordan is great.
You're great, too.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I guess we will, yeah, let you go.
We, I hope we will see all of you December 31st. At the stroke of nine PM.
At the Umbrella Parade first, and then there.
Umbrella Parade, solstice, and then.
End of.
Yeah.
If you have any other arts questions or comments, feel free to reach out. There's my contact info.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Thank you. And next up, another committee update, this one from the Public Safety Advisory Committee, uh, presented by Steve Adams, our soon-to-retire city engineer, and Ben Green, engineering technician, and Jay Panagos, the PSAC chair. Oh, Steve's not coming up? Okay.
I'm gonna steal, steal his spotlight, he doesn't mean to speak. Going to point anything on it, uh, just in case. Tell me just to prepare it and have it ready?
Sure, why not?
I'll go there if you're gonna do it.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I guess I'll start?
Yep.
Okay. All ready?
We're ready, we're ready. Are we waiting on a presentation to come up?
No.
No, okay.
I don't, I don't need it.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, evening, Mayor Beatty, and members of the council. My name is Ben Green, I'm an engineering technician, and I'm here as the liaison for the Public Safety Advisory Committee, also known as PSAC or PSAC. I am accompanied by Jay Panagos, the chair of the committee. Today, we are pleased to update you on the significant progress made by PSAC in the past year, as well as future work. PSAC has been actively meeting both in person at the Public Safety Building and via Zoom monthly. One, one.
Can you maybe speak up a little and maybe pull the mic a little closer? You weren't here earlier, but I was, I commented at the start of the building, at the meeting, that we have some trouble with the zoo, particularly because we have some councilors participating.
For sure. Can you hear me better now?
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So, PSAC has been actively meeting both in person at the Public Safety Building and via Zoom monthly. One notable project undertaken by PSAC during these meetings was the revision of our existing bylaws. These bylaws, which were somewhat outdated, have now been updated to align with the new City of Milwaukee template and incorporate necessary changes agreed upon by the majority of PSAC. While most of the changes to the bylaws were of basic nature, PSAC decided to introduce a few notable additions. First, the committee agreed to begin each meeting with a mission statement. In the past, our meetings often dive straight into the reports from the police and fire departments without providing any overall context. By incorporating a mission statement at the start of each meeting, we aim to offer a broad summary that provides guests who may not be familiar with PSAC, a quick overview of our purpose and goals. Furthermore, PSAC reached a consensus to include the Native Lands Acknowledgement Statement, which was approved by council at the beginning of each meeting. This acknowledgement is now also a part of our bylaws. By incorporating this statement into our bylaws, PSAC hopes to set up positive precedence for future committee members and demonstrate our commitment to recognizing and honoring the native lands upon which we reside. The previous bylaws, which were quite lengthy, um, uh, but we invested a considerable effort in eliminating outdated and non-essential con, content. PSAC dedicated almost two years to this endeavor, and while it may have taken longer than we preferred, we are happy with the updates and changes. PSAC welcomes any recommendations you might have to offer. We appreciate the city council's support and approval in incorporating these updates into our bylaws. PSAC remains dedicated in its mission to ensuring public safety in our community, and we look forward to continuing our collaboration efforts with city council, city employees, and residents within city limits. Happy to answer any questions, Laura. I'll pass it on to Jay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
You might pull the mic a little bit closer, but I, I can hear you all.
So I'm gonna kind of quickly go over what we do at our meetings, that are basically our agenda, and like Ben was saying, we have a mission statement that we start off initially the meeting. We have public comments from whomever is in the audience that just wanted to walk in and be part of the meeting. Clackamas Fire Report, Jack Tans is fantastic every time. He's got a report detailed as to what's going on as far as, uh, the increase in fires, what kind of danger, especially this summer. It was, uh, pretty serious. The Police Report is Tony Saragino, uh, which is, uh, he's our new rep, actually, and, um, it's pretty self-explanatory, a police report. And then Capitol Improvements Plan, that was Steve, and now it'll be Jennifer Garbley and Ben, and, uh, that is super important as far as, uh, safety goes throughout the whole city, as far as, uh, new projects that are going on. Action items or NDA concerns, uh, all of our NDAs, uh, take back to their meeting what we discuss, and then they bring back to us what possibly could be done in their neighborhood to be, uh, a little bit safer. And then, uh, also, action items, um, that can be anything, uh, dealing with transportation plan to, uh, uh, the emergency, uh, plan, um, whatever we want to discuss. We kind of do whatever we, we have to on that. And then, uh, basically, uh, our meetings last about an hour and a half, sometimes two, they get stretched out a little bit, and, um, that's basically our agenda. What I want to do is I want to put a plug in for Lewelling Safe Routes to School Plan. Uh, that's in the draft stage right now, and, uh, it's like a ninety-page draft. It's, it's extensive, and it's, it can be tedious to read that whole plan, but it's, uh, it's super important for the Lewelling neighborhood, uh, and most of all for, uh, for the neighborhood, for the citizens, pedestrians, cyclists, whomever. It needs to be done as soon as possible before winter, otherwise there's a, a two-year delay on whether or not, uh, the monies would actually come forward for the, uh, different construction plans that are involved in that plan. What else? Transportation plan is gonna be a big part of, uh, Public Safety Advisory Committee. It'll probably take up a good portion of our meetings. Um, it hasn't been reviewed or, uh, changed since 2013 with a few exceptions along the way, but everyone knows, uh, transportation has changed a lot in ten years. Uh, you now have e-bikes, you have scooters, uh, you've got, uh, different transportation issues, there's more people that live here. What's really nice about that plan is that, uh, the Engineering Department and City of Milwaukee, uh, and the Planning Commission have done an excellent job of creating, uh, a better infrastructure than there was in 2013. There are certain things that weren't the plan in 2013 that I don't know if they got brushed aside or if we didn't have the money for it, but, um, I've heard a few comments from people in Ardenwald and, um, a few other neighborhoods about, you know, when their Greenway was gonna get completed, and then Monroe Greenway, uh, that seems to, seems to change month to month as to what the status is. I know that it's ongoing, I know that ODOT has a big part in that, but we're still not positive as to, uh, when we're gonna actually get the ball rolling on that. As far as the transportation plan, there's an advisory committee. We have two members of, uh, Public Safety that are on that committee, Pam Denham and Christine Giotti, and, uh, they will be bringing back information to us at our safety meetings and, uh, which will really be nice. Other than that, uh, that's about it. Other than, uh, Dan Harris is working on, I believe, the emergency plan for the City of Milwaukee, and I, I think that's still in the draft stage also. And I did have a couple of questions about that for Dan and probably for, for the city council.
I was here earlier, but he's not, okay.
But, uh, uh, warming stations for when it gets really cold, and then, uh, this summer, I believe, we didn't, I think we maybe had one cooling station, and then I think the library provided, uh, provided a place where folks could go if it got over, like, a hundred degrees during a certain time period. So I think we're, we're lacking in that, and it's probably something that needs to be, uh, looked at.
And Jay, I just wanted to say, totally hear you on that. I do know that Dan and Ann are planning to attend the September PSAC meeting to talk with you both more about that.
That'd be nice. So that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Kosterbadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no questions, I just wanted to, uh, thank you and let you know, I appreciate you taking the time to review, uh, the bylaws and including the, uh, Native Lands Acknowledgement. That's, I really appreciate that, and.
You're welcome.
Just, just being able to have that thought to, to include that, um, that shows a lot, so, thank you to you and the members of PSAC. Appreciate it.
Um, I did have one question, which was, you alluded to safe routes to schools having to be done this year. You obviously don't mean built this year, but you mean some sort of adoption in order to go into a funding cycle or something?
I'm not quite sure. Um, I was talking to Stefan, and he told me that, um, if, if, uh, there wasn't progress made before, what, January, February, there was a chance that it would be another two-year delay before any monies would come forward for the construction portion of the plan. I'm not quite sure when the draft is gonna be not a draft and it's gonna be a final plan. Um, I think they're working on it as we speak, probably, so.
Okay, okay. I think some of that neighborhood may come to our September nineteenth meeting and talk about that, um, but I just, I, I just want to make clear, I guess, it's, it's not about construction this year, it's about framing it up for funding. Okay, um. On warming and cooling stations, you're speaking my language, that's something I've been concerned about, and somebody recently pointed out to me, you know, it, it, later tonight, we're having a presentation, a fairly lengthy presentation on our equity work and assessing what we do, and it's more focused on, you know, sort of city function, uh, hiring and procurement and things, but I do think we have to think about heating and cooling shelters as equity issues. And, uh, someone pointed out to me at the Linwood picnic this weekend that we also should think about splash pads as equity issues, you know, as places for people to get relief in the hot weather. The, um. On the, I mean, I encourage you, I guess, to maybe tune in later and, or, you know, go on YouTube later and listen to the report and discussion on the equity, um, stuff, and think about how that applies to the PSAC's work. Um, I do think, for example, you know, we, we have a prioritized list of, of, uh, safe projects, but maybe it's time to take a look, a second look and a second thought about them from an equity perspective in terms of, I mean, I think we've done a pretty, the city's done a really good job of having them be all over town and serving different portions of town geographically, but just taking a look at the next, the remaining ones on the list and what, you know, from, with, from an equity perspective, so, I hope that will happen either with the PSAC or with the TSP work.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I, I think, uh, throughout the neighborhoods, I think, um, people get a little impatient. Everyone wants their projects done first, and, uh, there's gotta be a real good way to explain that, I guess, but there is a priority system, and, um, you pretty much have to follow that. I think it's just, I think, uh, quite often citizens don't understand what that priority system is, you know, whether it's money or whether it was something that was put on hold for whatever reason. And, um, I know Ben had mentioned in our last meeting, uh, this, kind of on that subject, of us, uh, having a safety portion in the Milwaukee Pilot, which, uh, would be kind of nice, um, for, uh, maybe I can write it, or Ben can write it, or maybe Jennifer. And, uh, maybe in that, we can kind of, uh, touch on, on projects, too. I had one last thing that I wanted to, to say, and that was, um, we want to congratulate Steve Adams on just a fantastic job, uh, as a head engineer. Steve was just really, really good. Every meeting that we had, he was really thorough with all, uh, the projects that were going on, and, and to top it off, his, uh, his follow-up was just awesome. Anytime anyone had a question about something that maybe Steve didn't have an answer for, the very next day, you would get an email stating, you know, I contacted Public Works or I contacted whomever, and, uh, Steve was just fantastic. And I know that Jennifer's gonna be pretty good, but, uh, just wanted to maybe give him a round of applause, so.
Okay. Yes, absolutely. I was gonna, uh, I was gonna thank him at the end for his service to the city. Um, I do want to give Councilors Massey and, uh, Nicodemus a chance to weigh in with any questions or comments that they might have. Uh, Counselor Nicodemus, Council President Nicodemus, you wanna start?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all the work that, uh, you put in, uh, volunteering your time, which isn't always, um, conducive to our busy lives, so, thank you so much.
Great, and Counselor Massey?
Yeah, just echoing what, uh, Counselor Nicodemus said, uh, thanks, uh, to you and all the members of the, of the PSAC, and, uh, and, uh, thanks to the city engineer for his, uh, many years of service.
All right, well, um, with that, I would just like to close with thanking Steve for, uh, he's been with us for several years. We stole him away from Wilsonville, and he shortened his bike commute a little bit coming here instead of Wilsonville. And, uh, he's, I saw him around town at First Friday last week, so he's been, you know, engaged in our community in lots of different ways, and, um, and wish him the best in retirement, and, uh, yeah, have some fun. Thank you, anybody else? Okay. And there's a young lady in the back, is she a PSAC member, or she's just a member of the public? Okay.
Gabriella, who's our new Equity Inclusion Coordinator.
Oh, okay.
I hear you on the Equity.
Okay, good, yeah, I'm glad you were here. Okay, um, all right, well, then, we do, I would thank you guys, and we thank you, Steve. We do have an executive session after this, so I have a little script I have to read. After the work session, council will meet an executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute 192662H to consult with legal counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And with that, we will adjourn the work session, and we will go off-air, and the councilors will have to call in to a new line for the, so we'll have a five-minute break here before we go into our exec session. Thank you.